We have a public hearing given on the request of modification of special conditions for 2013, the Galacafé restaurant. We have ordinances on first meeting. Orders 031001 is an order to amend and supplement the revised general ordinances of the city of New Brunswick, tagged with revenue on finances. Orders 031002 is an order to approve a long-term tax exemption and financial agreement between the city of New Brunswick and Matrix Upper Lot 501, the O.C. Orders 303 is an order to approve a long-term tax exemption and financial agreement between the city of New Brunswick and Matrix, used regard, Dash Upper Lot 501, the O.C. Resolution. Resolution 031330 is a resolution to approve agenda amendments. Resolution 331, approve payroll from 3:0213 to 3:1513. Resolution 332 is a resolution to authorize people for redeem tax sales certificates. Resolution 333, approve, disapprove, relaxation or modification of special conditions for 2012, 2013 legalizing term for the Galacafé restaurant. Resolution 334, approve purchase by police department under state contract for microstrategies for network service was made in settlement for network servers, effective April 1st, 2013 to March 31st, 2014. Not to exceed $9,265, and this is a state contract. Resolution 335, approve emergency temporary accommodations for 2013. Resolution 336, approve transfer of accommodation reserves for 2012 municipal budget. Resolution 337, approve abort of contract, second year contract, with Dell Marketing LP for Microsoft Enterprise enrollment, software license for the police department. This is from April 1st, 2013 to March 31st, 2016. Not to exceed $106,781, with 70 cents, and this is a state contract also. Resolution 338, approve amendment of resolution 031246. The reason is to pay final payment in the amount of $2,643.97 with yield EGL. Drafted post-inquiry business as name for collision repair and auto painting, for automotive repairs for the police department for police unit number 934. Not to exceed $2,643.97. Approve all of these change order will not constitute an increase of 20% of more of the amount of the original contract. Resolution 339, approve amendment of resolution 121128. The reason is to make an additional purchase from the Institute of Permat for the division of new services with the Institute of Art Mark for purchase 20 wave-to-sharpen gray handheld computer devices for software. Not to exceed $3,692.31, and approve all of these change order will constitute an increase of 20% of more of the amount of the original contract. Resolution 340, approve renewal of contract for the dollar right program for year 2013 with the St. Louis University Department of Human Services. The term is from January 1st, 2013 to December 31st, 2013, and the amount is $56,515. This is not on top. Resolution 341, approve a resolution for acceptance of long-term tax exemption application for Matrix Upper Lot Party Development. Resolution 342, approve a resolution for acceptance of long-term tax exemption application for Matrix Upper Lot Reservation Development. Resolution 344, approve request for street closing. Requested by the New Brunswick Park Authority. Location, Midiston Avenue between George and New Street for St. Peters University Hospital Gala at the Eldrick Hotel on Saturday, April 13th, 2013, from 6:00 p.m. to 1:00 a.m., for extra duty. Resolution 344, approve request for street closing. Requested by the New Brunswick Park Authority. Midiston Avenue between George and New Street for New Y&amp;J Gala at the Eldrick on Saturday, April 27th, 2013, from 6:00 p.m. to 1:00 p.m., for this extra duty. Resolution 345, approve abort of contract with safety in doing business as Atlantic Tactical Inn for work uniforms for council inspection as fire prevention. The term is 12 months from March 21st, 2013 to March 20th, 2014. Not to exceed $10,200. Resolution 346, approve request for street closing. Requested by New Brunswick Recreation. Location, Johnson Drive and George Street for the 13th Avenue, New Brunswick Sofa Observatory on Saturday, June 1st, 2013, and Sunday, June 2nd, 2013, from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., for this extra duty. Resolution 347, approve offer of map lap on Park, New Brunswick, New Jersey to the Peace Foundation Group on September 29th, 2013. Resolution 348, approve request for use of city sidewalk. Requested by San John's Baptist Church for good friday religious possession of sidewalk on Friday, March 29th, 2013, from 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. Resolution 349, approve request for use of city property. Requested by New Brunswick Recreation and St. Peters Health Care System. Location, Bureau of Art Pavilion and Sun Fields for a community health fair on Saturday, May 4th, 2013, from 12:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m., with a main date of Sunday, May 5th, 2013. The time is from 12:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m., for this extra duty. Resolution 350, resolution to authorize execution of a lease agreement between Catholic Charries and the city of New Brunswick for a portion of property known as 81 Remsen Avenue, New Brunswick, New Jersey. Resolution 351, approve relaxation of the city ordinance ordinance. Requested by S.A.N.S. Construction Company. The reason to make refer to the payment of Johnson Drive. The date and time is Saturday, March 33rd, 2013, from 7:00 a.m. to 12:00. The date and time of Saturday, March 30th, 2013, and April 6th, 2013, from 7:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Resolution 352, approve authorization to advertise. Requested by the Agent Richie Foreman for College Avenue Lot 4 Improvement. Resolution 353, approve amendment of resolution 021342. And the reason is to pay for supplemental services of separating the utility meters in order to spread the utility bills with design ideas with architecture and planning, A.L.C. for Remsen Avenue Party Museum and Community Center. Not to exceed $3,428. Approve all of this change order will not constitute an increase of 20% of more of the amount of the original contract. Resolution 354, approve amendment of resolution 091238. And the reason is to administer authorized application, execution, and acceptance of grant with Miruses County for 2013, New Brunswick Alliance on Substantive Use Prevention. Cash match $9,834, and the grant is $43,334. Resolution 355, authorized application, acceptance, and execution of grant with Miruses County to clarify the legal prevention grant agreement for third and fifth grade students at Udonosa Elementary School and MacInley School. The term is from March 1st, 2013 to March 31st, 2014. Amount to be received during 2020. This is not on top. Resolution 356, approve abort of contract and authorization to reject two bits and rebit for truck and equipment replacement parts with Trius Ink, Desto Ink, Alter William Rush, Campbell Freightliner, A.L.C. The term is 12 months starting March 21st, 2013, and ending on March 20th, 2014. Not to exceed $45,000. Resolution 357, approve amendment of resolution 121270. The reason is second carport goods for the distribution division of water treatment and plant maintenance employees and first fare of work goods for water treatment plants operators. New Brunswick uniform supply in for work goods. Not to exceed $2,313. Approve all of this change order will constitute an increase of 20% of more of the amount of the original contract. Resolution 358, authorized use of performance one and site inspection to inspection chemical for 769 Yersey Avenue. The amount is $1,185.20. Resolution 359, approve abort of contract with National Fence Systems Team for New Brunswick Library Fence Improvement. Not to exceed $63,097. Resolution 360, approve amendment of resolution 01368. Change order number four with Heart Proctors Corporation for Remsen Avenue Area Stones Sewing Improvement. The credit of $17.40. Resolution 361, approve request for solicitation of funds requested by Boston University Pediatrics against cancer from the American Cancer Society from March 27th, 2013 to March 29th, 2013, April 3rd to April 6th, 2013, and April 9th to April 10th, 2013. The time is from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. The location is George Street and Avenue Street, George Street and Hamilton, Easton Avenue and Hamilton Street, and North Street and Commercial Avenue. Resolution 362, approve appointment of counsel. Name, Meredith and Alvin. Representation of Police Director Anthony A. Capino in the matter of Steven Middleton versus City of New Brunswick. Not to exceed $1,000. Resolution 363, approve appointment of counsel. Name, Lawrence Vitorman Esquire. Representation of Michael Bobadilla in the matter of Osuado Nales for Heraldez Nieves and José Granados Poya versus the City of New Brunswick. Not to exceed $1,000. Do you want to make any formal orders?
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Council Vice President Egan.
Here.
Councilmember Fleming.
Here.
Councilmember Garlatti.
Present.
Council President Estebor.
Here.
Please be advised that the notice requirement of the open forum meeting has been complied with and satisfied in that we had all noticed, which gave sufficient notice of the time and place and conduct of all public meetings of the municipal council of the city of New Brunswick, as they filed to the city clerk, has been placed on an appropriate voting board in the local city hall of New Brunswick, New Jersey, and has been transmitted to the official newspaper for the city of New Brunswick, named the government to be reviewed. Which of all meetings?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, that will keep in its heart.
Please stay close for a moment to all of Rosa Americas and Afghans who have lost their lives in the war in Afghanistan. Thank you. This is an official motion to the March 6th, 2013. Please. Second.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan.
Yeah.
Councilmember Fleming.
Yes.
Councilmember Garlatti.
Hi.
Council President Estebor.
Yes.
We have a public hearing. Is everybody here present? Is all of that?
Yes, Madam Council President. I understand that Mr. Bradshaw is here representing the licensee and I suspect the principal of the licensee is also here. For the benefit of the public as well as to refresh the council's reputation, this matter comes before the council to review special conditions that were placed upon this license at the time of renewal pursuant to resolution R-061220. At the time of the renewal of this particular license, the city council placed special conditions on this licensee. At the time of placing those special conditions, the council also elected at that time to suspend one of the special conditions dealing with the cessation of music on Saturday and Sunday evenings. The council decided that if you visit this particular licensee to monitor and obviously obtain information reporting on the ongoing operations of the establishment to determine how the special conditions and the cessation of the music special condition was working out. And tonight is that particular hearing for purposes of reporting to the city council. I know that Detective DeBonis is here this evening. There he is. Who I would ask to address the council in the first instance relative to the activity in and about the last time.
Detective DeBonis?
Yes, Detective DeBonis, the Bronx Police Department. Good evening. From February 15, 2012 to February 15, 2013, there were 96 calls for service at the gala, 156 Commercial Avenue. Fifty-six of these calls for service were noise complaints. Twenty-five calls for service were for disorderly persons or disorderly offenses. At this point in time, we received a letter, actually dated March 15th, from the Second Ward Crime Watch wanting to reinstate the previous conditions of the establishment and I believe there are some members of the community and residents that would like to speak on behalf of these specific violations also.
Thank you.
Madam Council President, what I would suggest is perhaps we hear from any members of the public and then give Mr. Bradshaw an opportunity strictly to address the council and any response that he may have on behalf of the licensee. That might be a way to proceed your way with this.
Any members of the public would like to address the council on this specific public hearing about the Galacafé? Name and address?
William Walker, 154 Commercial Avenue.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. I was involved in the original case, I guess, I don't see, 2000 that put the conditions on the gala. And unfortunately, shortly after those conditions we were put on, we were actually attacked several times. It was a double arson attack on our house and my house next door. So we got a little shy about coming to city council meetings. And it was a little post-traumatic, stressed about the whole thing. Anyways, there was also a home invasion that happened. And almost attempted home invasion. So we felt pretty up on the spot. Anyways, we decided to stay in our home and stay here and defend it. I guess what happened in about 2009 was conditions were relaxed, suspended because we weren't coming to city council meetings. We were too scared basically to show our faces. And so nothing happened. Finally, you guys suspended the restrictions. Now, we did some research. And this is actually Mike's, Mike DeBonis's tavern report. From 2009, when the restrictions in place, to 2012, when the restrictions, you know, I guess the last tavern report. And what shows is a line that goes like this, the gala. In 2009, we have, with the restrictions in place, we have 10 calls for service. 2010, it goes to 34. 2011, it goes to 54. 2012, 83. The most complained about tavern in New Brunswick. The highest number of calls for service in the tavern report. And we actually see that in 2011, the trans-citywide went down. Number of calls for service went down. But the gala, straight up. So that alone, I would think, if you can see where the calls for service, where the suspension went off, suspension of the, pardon me, of the restrictions went off. Just want to see copies of this, pass this around. Complaints went straight to the brief. So, and I have copies of tavern reports from those years as well. As you can see, we're not making these. These are your numbers. This is state of New Brunswick's numbers. And this is a waste of the public's money, waste of our public resources. We also have, we don't usually keep track of all our phone calls. But since 2000, I guess in late 2012, we had a rock thrown through our window because a patron was urinating against one of our vehicles. I stopped him. He tried throwing something at me. We stopped to intervene. And then someone, I can't say it was him. Someone came back 15 minutes later and threw a rock through, actually, one of my tenants' windows. And we filed a police report and were very upset about it. And so violence is occurring directed on us because we don't want people urinating on our cars every night. Literally, if you poke your head out at night at 2:00 in the morning when the gala's closing, it's a service. And you can find three or four people urinating next to the gala or against other buildings, no problem. If you want, we film it and put it on YouTube. Anyways, since the beginning of the year, we've had, on the first of the year, we started with a huge fight in front of the gala at 5:00 in the morning. Where I think at least four patrol cars, four patrol cars were required to come. On February 25th, there was a disturbance that was large enough that 11 patrol cars came. All units, all units respond. That's what we got on the radio. That's our complaints just since the beginning of the year. If you want, we can pull our complaints for the past two years. So, and then literally a week, two days later, we had, sorry, a week later, we had another situation where a fight occurred and four patrol cars were necessary. So we have a bar that you guys are willing to license. And the only way we can license it is by having a uniformed officer parked in front of the place the entire time it's open. And on top of that, it's necessary for up to 12 police cars to come. And this is in a completely residential neighborhood. It is R5A. Permitted uses are single-family dwellings, two-family dwellings, I think. Other permitted uses are townhouses or churches. So I'm assuming that the gala inherited grandfathered the variance, which probably the pizza mill had. But I doubt as whether a variance was ever, I know that a variance was never obtained to turn to allow the gala to operate as a nightclub. And that's what it is. Now, if you go to other towns, you'll find that mainly they put them on like Route 36 or, you know, Route 18. They'll put them on the major thoroughfares where they're away from residential homes so that tax-paying, rent-paying homeowners can enjoy the quiet of their home. We're regularly woken up at 2:00 in the morning when we're trying, or we've already gone to sleep and we're woken up out of a cold sleep. So, I think that's all that I have. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other member of the public would like to?
Yes. Here is Mary, 154 Nickel Avenue. Basically, my point is that from my experience, obviously, I live across the street from the establishment. And obviously, just from my being woken up, like Will said, at 2:00 in the morning, anywhere between 1:00 to 3:00, I'm, whether I've gone to bed or not, I'm basically up. And I'm, you know, I've experienced many patrol cars having to come to the establishment. People outside, but regardless of the crowd that comes outside of the establishment at closing, which there are more limitations as far as I understand. My biggest issue is with the sound system and the functioning of the establishment inside. It seems to me that the license that they currently hold gives them permission to function as a tavern, which according to the zoning definition means that it is a place where the principal use or function is the selling of alcohol beverages and incident thereto may be the retail sale or consumption of food as a permitted use consistent with New Jersey law. From my experience, they seem to be functioning more as a nightclub, which according to the definition is any place of business serving alcohol or beverages for consumption on premises wherein people assemble for the main purpose of being entertained, whether such entertainment consists of dancing or other activities. So although this may not be the main purpose at all hours as they do function as restaurant, bar, grill for a majority of the day, it's obvious that on weekends, on weekends and nights, they function more as a nightclub. And this is just by a simple online search. And I can hand you some copies of what I have. There are photographs. I know you won't have the opportunity to follow the links and videos as well as right now. But it's very obvious that the place is being promoted. The events that are being held there are being promoted as parties with live music and DJs. They obviously have a large sound system, which you can definitely see is obvious through the videos. In the videos, it's evident that this is in no way would be able to function as a restaurant because it's pitch black, there are strobe lights, and there's a DJ. So I mean, nowhere in the video as it does in 360 or even 180 can you see anywhere where someone might be able to be sitting down and enjoying a family dinner or even on a date. So based on that, based on what we've heard and what we've experienced and based on the data that's been collected by the police department, it's my opinion that the establishment is functioning outside of its permitted functioning. And obviously, we've had to bear the prump of that because most of us have either jobs or are students and have to wake up early. And it's not really, our schedules are not flexible enough for me to be up until 3:00, 3:30 in the morning and wake up at, you know, as early as 6:00. So it's definitely made a huge difference in our lives. So could you sort of free time?
Thank you. Any other member of the committee would like to address the council on this specifically? Yes?
Maria Palaneta, 153 Nickel Avenue. I'm also the president of the Second Ward Neighborhood Block Club and Crime Watch. I'm passing out the letter that our block club approved. Our members are very concerned that we have commercial establishments in our neighborhoods that violate our zoning code, our noise ordinances, and the social norms of residential neighborhoods. Currently, the Degala Cafe is operating as a nightclub, even though it is not zoned as such. In addition, the special restrictions that were put on its legal license were suspended for reasons that are not clear to me. For at least five years, some of our members have experienced degraded quality of life as a result of increasing problems at the gala, as documented in the city zone tavern report. We firmly believe that the, we as a block club, believe that the poor quality of life in any neighborhood can lead to neighborhood instability and noise and crime rates. In addition, noise and compromised quality of life cause homeowner occupants to sell their homes and move out of their neighborhoods. I have to tell you, this is a regular, this is, I hear this regularly at our block club meetings. You can speak to the police who attempt people having moved out. According to the U.S. Census, owner-occupied homes, new brands are declining 6% between 2000 and 2010. The city currently has an owner occupancy rate of only 25% as opposed to the state of New Jersey's rate of 65%. So I and other block club members conclude that the quality of life in our neighborhoods matters to the long-term stability of our community. We urge you to vary these screening statements, restrictions on Degala Cafe, but would prefer that you also inform our city's zoning and noise ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishes to address the council on this matter? Yes, sir? Name and address, please?
Noah Haberschmidt, 154 Commercial Avenue, apartment 2. Can I speak out so much other than my own personal experience? The level of the music in the bays is extremely loud. And it's persistently and consistently loud, particularly on Sunday evenings going into Monday morning, which regularly impedes the ability to properly get up on time and go to work. I mean, I teach early in the mornings and I have a nightclub next door that's consistently playing music till the hours of the morning. It's a little concerning. But I would say that the primary concerns have, which I've consistently reported to the police department, consist of public internation, public bombing, as well as a lot of congregating of patrons outside of the establishment on Stevens Street and Commercial Avenue late into the evening. I know the police department has been very helpful at times and may have quickly responded. So just like I said, I do really appreciate their work and contribution. But as a resident, I find it a little perplexing as to why it's so loud and excessive Sunday evening to Monday morning. Other than that, I just, I don't know the rules and the regulations. So I can't really speak to much else.
Thank you. Anybody else want to, yes, sir?
My name is Peter Mottiu, other than 153 Nickel Avenue. I would just ask you to, at a minimum, reinstate the strictest possible requirements on this facility because it's obviously burdening the residential neighborhood and degrading the quality of life in our neighborhood. And I'd actually like you to go further than that. I'd actually like you to ask Mr. Patterson to confirm the zoning status of this facility and ask Mr. DeBonis whether or not he thinks it is functioning more as a restaurant or more as a nightclub. And if it turns out that it's... And if it turns out that it's operating more as a nightclub, don't allow that. Don't make a mockery of the laws that are on our books. Please enforce the zoning ordinance and support the, the neighborhoods, the residential neighborhoods of, uh, of New Brunswick. There are plenty of places in New Brunswick where it's perfectly appropriate to have a nightclub. The Degala happens to be located in one where it is not appropriate, and, um, that needs to change. Thank you very much.
Anybody else wishes to address the council on this matter? Name an address, please?
Georgina Tavara, 157 Commercial Avenue. Um, well, I'm gonna talk about myself because I can't talk for nobody else. But I can complain about Degala, I be right in front, right in front, and I can't say they have the noise that they have. I go to school, so, you know, I never, I have a song to list to me, and my song, you don't cry during the night because you hear a lot of noise, nothing. So, I can't complain about noise, about nothing else in Degala. That's my own spirit. So, I can't say that I hear noise like they say, I can't say I have seen any, you know, probably thing, nothing. That's what I have to say.
Thank you. Anybody else wishes to address the council? Name an address, please?
Michael Jordan, 145 Commercial Avenue. Um, I live exactly across the street from Degala, and my window is right in front. And some weeks I work, uh, seven days, I work Saturday and Sunday, and it doesn't affect my schedule. I'm up at 4:00 every morning, fresh page for work, so I have no problem.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public wishes to address? Name an address, please?
155 Single Street, under the complaint with Degala.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm from Cleveland, Cleveland, Florida. Too much, I don't have no complaint but the bar, but only quite over there, and I live across the street from the bar. I never had no complaint but the bar, a lot of all the times.
Thank you. Anything else? Anybody else from the public wishes to address? Yes, name an address.
I'm from, um, I moved from that address like three months ago, and I have break kids and they go to school, and I work in a company, and I have no problem with the music at Degala.
Thank you. Thank you. Sir?
Yes, Alberto Lucas. I live next to Degala, 667th Street. Um, definitely, I, I have no complaint about that. As we work, I, we have every morning at 6:00, I have any complaint about Degala.
Thank you. Anybody else wishes to address the council on this matter?
Uh, my name is Gary Dia, I live in Monta, Illinois, Carros Avenue. I don't have no complaint about noise from Degala, and I am pretty early in the home, never have any noise.
Thank you. Anybody else wishes to? Let me see, I have somebody else asking, then I'll go back to you. Anybody else who has to, uh, so, Cradaville?
Yeah, Charles Cradaville, um, living in the 5th Ward in New Brunswick. I just wanted to know, when was it supposed to happen that these, uh, that this hearing was actually supposed to, to happen? I, I, I remember being at these meetings in, in 2010, and, uh, at the meetings, there was, um, the restrictions were lifted from Degala, and I recall quite vividly that the council made a decision to lift the restrictions temporarily for 90 days, and the agreement was made that in 90 days, it would be revisited. And I don't recall that ever happening, so I wanted to ask what, when in 2010 was this supposed to happen, and why is it taking two years or three years to have this hearing happen?
Um, I think it was less than that because I remember when I got here, and I haven't been here for three years yet, uh, we did talk about, that's when we put, uh, we lifted the restriction, and we did say that we were gonna be revisiting every day depending on, on how everything was going. So, I would, as the council indicated, that it didn't happen until it was pointed out towards, um, that we needed to go back to that. So, that's the only thing that I could tell you, take responsibility for that. So, I can't tell you why it didn't happen, but I'm taking responsibility that it didn't work.
So, it was, it was supposed to happen years ago?
Well, nine years ago, last year, 2012, actually, last year, that's when we were supposed to go there.
Oh, it worked sometimes.
That's when, that's when I said, that's why I said I haven't been here three years. Okay, okay. Last year, we did talk about, we, that's when we did it, so.
But so, I guess, just, if, if I could just add, um, I'm the council president, and I, I know that we tried to agendize this through the clerk's office earlier than this month, in fact, just after the first of the year, and I know that counsel for the license he had requested is German's because his client was out of the country. And then there was a request for another German, uh, the availability of witness, I think, so unfortunately, uh, we're here today, but it hasn't been years.
Yeah, but it just, you know, but it didn't happen within the 90 days, you know, we have to.
Right, right. Well, so just in the future, when we say 90 days, we'll revisit it, let's either revisit it in 90 days or end that temporary thing after the 90 days so it doesn't, it can't continue for this long.
Thank you, Mr. Cradaville. Yes, sir?
Yeah, I just wanna say that our house is 50 feet from the sign Degala, and Degala's about 100 feet deep, and so is our house. So, we share, we face each other directly 50 feet away. We're the closest house to Degala. I certainly don't doubt that any of the people here don't experience noise problems, but we do, and the number of calls for service accelerated from 10 to 83, and Degala now being the number one complaint about bar in New Brunswick. Not just by us, but by other people in the neighborhood, obviously, as well. Doesn't come from nowhere. Um, I also wanted to say that whenever Degala is open, there's absolutely nowhere for us to park, and the officer in front does not enforce the parking laws. People park within like 3 feet of the corner, on all four corners. So, you're like literally eight parked, at least eight cars parked illegally every corner, and it's impossible for us residents to park. There's 24-hour-a-day resident permit parking. We have an absentee no-ward park, and that's only when Degala Cafe is open. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public wishes to address the council on this matter?
Um, my name is Jessica Dismal. I love my siblings, and she's an elderly person, we have no complaints about Degala Cafe at all.
Thank you. Anybody else wishes to address the council on Degala?
Hi, uh, my name is Pauland Jolly, and I'm here to, I guess, try to figure out when Degala will be opening. Um, I have kind of read up about it, and I did notice that there were a few, I guess, problems on the agenda that they were wishing to, I guess, familiarize themselves with and try to figure out when exactly it would be implied for it to, uh, you know, have certain type of restrictions as the ordinances have been previously mentioned, but, um, not too sure about the, uh, what's on the.
Who wants to address any? I guess, anybody with this song, talking about Degala, because she doesn't know much about what it was open and some of the restrictions. Anybody else wishes to address the public on this, I mean, the council on this matter? Yes, Mr. P.
I have a question. Um, is this the only step, the only bar that has a, a police on the outside of it? Because every time I come, like I arrive by, there is a cop always stationed there. And is this the only bar in town?
Well, I know that we have, um, Topical, it is also.
Right.
Based on the number of.
Maybe another one or two, but I can't recall what it's talking about yet. And any other, like, complaints as far as, like, residents from other bars? I do, like, is this?
It's not only Degala. We have heard about other, uh, establishments like Topical, uh, Topicala from George and Marshall. We have heard also some, uh, concerns from residents about that establishment also.
And what was, what was the Degala prior to it being the Degala?
It was the Traveler.
Oh, so this was, this, this, this has been in place, this establishment has been this sort of business from, for decades from down the state.
Anybody else from the public wishes to address the council?
Mr. Bradshaw, I think, at this point, the council president, may want to address the council.
Uh, yes, police council, Patrick Bradshaw, behalf of Degala Cafe. Um, I just wanna put this thing in perspective because things have been, uh, I just wanna narrow the focus to actually what we're talking about here tonight, and I think the last gentleman's point is a good segue to do that. This is an establishment that is not going anywhere. It is a legal use where it is. Certainly, Mr. Patterson and the zoning office can look to see if there's zoning violations, but a liquor establishment is gonna be here, it's been here for a long time, it's been in this neighborhood for a long, long time. And the focus of tonight's hearing, and, and I'll give you a little bit of timeline, it was in July of 2010 that the, the council, um, lifted one restriction that was in place, okay? The one restriction that was in place was regarding music, and it was for only two nights of the week, and it was only for a couple of hours, and I'll give you those hours. The prior restriction was that on Saturday night, the music had to be turned off at 1:00 a.m., and on Sunday night, the music had to be turned off at 11:00 a.m. Uh, Peter. Um, and the restriction was lifted to allow the music to play until business closed. So, on Saturday night, you're talking about the difference of about 45 minutes, um, and now you're, and, and Sunday night, you're talking about, uh, two hours and 45 minutes. That's all we are talking about here. We kept in place voluntarily, uh, the police presence there, which, in case anybody doesn't know, we pay for that. We kept it in place on Friday nights, we kept it in place on Saturday nights, we kept it in place on Sunday nights. It's still there. I'm not here tonight to address arson and rock throwing and, and other catastrophic events. That's not why we're here. It has nothing to do with that. It doesn't have anything to do with public urination. It doesn't have anything to do with parking violations. That's not why I'm here to address it. That's not what the council's here to speak about and to, to make a decision about. We have police presence there because that was one of the restrictions and it's still there in place. Now, um, back to the timeline. So, July 2010, after hearing testimony from the officer that's primarily stationed there, and I had hoped he'd be here tonight, but he's on vacation, uh, and, and you can hear from him if you need to, he came in and he testified that many, I don't wanna say most, but I'd like to because it's close, of the noise complaints that were phoned in were unfounded. He's standing there. Now, you've heard from one gentleman who's very adamant about this, and he's very adamant about the numbers and how many calls are a bit. Now, I have to question, how many of those calls are actually made by him? I, I suspect a great number of them, and he's welcome to testify, how many of them are actually made by him? Because he clearly knows that by calling in, whether they're founded or not, they're going on this report. So, it's in his best interest to skew the numbers as best as he can, and I believe he has, but that doesn't make those founded. Now, I've looked at the report for, uh, the past year, from 2012 to February of this year, and of the 53 reports, by the way, many of them are not on Saturday and Sunday nights. So, a noise complaint on Wednesday, and there are several of them, a noise complaint on Friday or Monday, and I'm not talking about the theoretically that it shifted over because they called late on Sunday night, making it a Monday, are not the nights that these restrictions were ever in place for. That's not what we're talking about. And by the way, the bar's even open on Monday and Tuesday, and it closes at midnight on Wednesdays. So, you know, he's trying to run an establishment, and he's trying to do it, and I think the council has a responsibility both to the commercial side of the town and the residential side, and I think that the restrictions that, that we have in place, primarily being police presence, is at great expense every weekend. How much is that every? $1,500 every, every weekend for the police presence, um, is significant. And so, by asking to be allowed to play music during those business hours, I don't see it's going too far, and I think that the council has had the opportunity to hear from the public, and, um, certainly, everybody's entitled to their, their opinion, but I think, you know, you can get a good sense that many of the people that live right there, and we got all their addresses, uh, do not have a problem with this. One resident does, but he has a global problem with the bar. He has a global problem with the establishment being there at all. It's not going anywhere. And, and I did receive the, the Neighborhood Watch report. I'm not sure, quite frankly, and I, I do mean this in respect, that when the, that, that letter was written, that the person writing it actually knew what the restrictions were. She just says, "I think I'd like them to be back in place," but did, did they realize how limited the restrictions are, that we were only talking about 45 minutes on one night and 2 hours and 45 minutes on the next? I don't think so. If you read the letter, and I'm welcome to read the letter, she wants the bar closed. The bar is not going to close. Now, we certainly wanna work with the people in the neighborhood, and I gave, I, when I appeared here in June of last year, I offered to meet with this gentleman and to speak about problems. I was never contacted. My client was never contacted. So, I mean, I don't know what else we can do other than, than to show the board that there, there is enough here to show that the restrictions, as they exist today and as they've existed since July of 2010, are sufficient, and to put more restrictive on it is not gonna solve the problems that I've heard tonight, because I've heard from the public that the noise isn't a problem but for two or three people. And, again, the testimony that was before this council, the time you lifted the restrictions, we put in evidence that we have, uh, increased the soundproofing materials, changed the dynamics of the bar, and we had done affirmative, spent a lot of money in doing that, and that was one of the reasons the council said okay to lifting the restrictions. So, the other disturbances and the fights and, and vandalism and, and whether or not the chairman feels fear for coming to testing, I, I can't address that. It's impossible, it's a moving target, and it really has nothing to do with the focus of here, which is just those couple hours of the different music. We're still willing to have the police presence in place, and so we're, we're appealing to the council. And, and again, I think that, uh, because I don't have the benefit of, of the officer primarily stationed here, I think, um, you, you can confirm with Detective Debonis that, that many of the calls are unfounded when it comes to noise complaints.
Anybody else wishes to address the council? We go 1-1. Yes, sir?
He have a soundproof, only time he hear noise, when you open the door, when the people come out. The other time, you get no, no, no noise, only time you hear it when the people come outside. He got a soundproof. He, he, he built it inside, he built a, a soundproof inside. Only time he hear noise, when you open the door to come out, but other than that, he make, make no noise.
Thank you.
I'm collecting this report. I'm not, I'm not a resident of this report, but I attend the meetings, the crime watch meetings. I'm just curious to ask you two, three questions, probably. Um, one is, do you know when the police officer was assigned to stay in front of the Degala to monitor whatever goes on there?
When did it start?
Yeah.
Was it the?
It started with the decision that the council made, or the owner made, or the residents and police department made together?
Took me count that.
Go ahead with that.
Detective Debonis might be able to answer.
My understanding is there wasn't any insertion placed on the license by the city council. So, pretty much the city, pretty much the city council was the one.
That was eight years ago, I just told that.
And then, yeah, even Detective Debonis ordered, kept no. Does that officer engage noise complaints with violations?
When he's there?
Or just?
Does he?
Yes, that would be part of his job description. Okay, so a call was entered with dispatcher, and then that officer notified him.
And he wants to get away.
I just wondering what the primary.
Functions?
Yeah, function aspect, thank you.
So, if you could give us the primary functions of officer receivers, I believe he's the one.
He is one of the officers that works here from Winston M.R. Uh, we address quality of life issues in the surrounding area, at the establishment and surrounding communities. Uh, we would address any type of parking issues, which would fall under quality of life issues, and basically just police that area in general.
And I recall, and I just wanna add that, I know, uh, last year, um, when we're talking about this, uh, license, I remember that we, um, encouraged the officer who works there to come out of his car.
That's correct.
And walk around and do that because there were some, um, some observations that he was usually in the car, and so I'm assuming that that has been done, that he gets up and.
That was brought to our attention in one of the previous meetings. It's my understanding that has been addressed, I haven't heard any complaint about that today. So, I'm assuming, and I do know that the officers have been spending more time out of the vehicle, being more proactive in the surrounding area. And so, the third, the conclusion would be, I think that the officer is not just there to function as an intermediary for the dispatcher and rest of the police department to address noise. to address noise or noise violations only, correct?
There is, yes.
It's all you're planning to do.
So he has anything that he that is.
So there is a relevance beyond just?
Yes, the noise system. I have one question. Um, Detective Bonus, how about the parking situation? How is it handled?
Um, the officer should? The officer should address that issue. I do have a note that I wrote down, uh, where to make sure that in the future that issue is addressed and that's a high priority. You don't want to have to fall through the cracks.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm sorry, we know, uh, you talked about ninety-six calls and stuff like that. Do we know how many of them were at least founded or found something?
Um, the answer to that question is no, but some of the calls for service noise complaints were unfounded. I don't know how many, some of them are unfounded. However, with this gentleman over here, did say about the door opening, is accurate. When the door does open, and there's a little festival area inside, there is more noise coming from the establishment. So there may not be noise directly related at any particular time, but when it opens, it can be heard.
And I, I think maybe if the council has any further questions, then while we're done with that, I could revisit what the procedure, uh, is at this point.
Okay, I just want to say one more comment for somebody in there. Yes?
Yes, thank you. Regarding the, uh, police officer that is supposed to take your issues, um, related to quality of life, including sound and parking, um, just going to give you an anecdotal evidence. I spoke to the officer, um, about a year ago. I went out, uh, usually I don't have a conversation with anybody that won't be mutually respectful. Uh, yeah. Um, I went out to him and I asked him about what was going on, what he could do more because he gave him kind of the synopsis of where I was at, um, up to that point in relation to the issues that I was dealing with regarding the, the establishment. And he blatantly expressed to me that, uh, parking and that sound were not his problem. He said that the only thing that I'm supposed to do out here is make sure that people aren't fighting, that there is no people drinking outside. He may have said that there is no public urination, I don't recall. But I know for a fact that he told me that noise and parking are not part of my job.
That was a year ago, right?
Yes.
Can you make that say?
Yes.
Uh, that is part of his job description. I can't comment on one specific officer, who may or may not have said something more particularly right. But I assure you, that is part of his job description.
No, but I realize it's anecdotal evidence.
So for further, eh, knowledge, you know, if anything else happens, you heard here that that's part of his, um, functions. What is there?
Understood.
So?
Yes.
I would just like to ask Detective Bonus what his, his opinion is on the Gallo Cafe? And how does he feel? How is it operated?
Um, some individual brought up earlier that maybe operated as a club. Officially, Mr. Patterson has to answer that question. My understanding is, to operate like a club, people would be there primarily for entertainment. And that is a valid argument at this specific location. Uh, certain times of the evening, people are there primarily for the entertainment. Um, why would someone have the soundproof of particular wall if the music wasn't loud and people weren't here for dancing and/or some type of entertainment? Glenn Patterson would be better qualified to answer that question. But my understanding, it would lean towards a club activity in the evening, as I know. Thank you.
So, right along the same lines, um, before we officially decide what it is between a bar or a club, it's all about perception sometimes, you know, because we've heard two sides. We've heard some residents saying they do have a problem, and then some residents saying they don't have a problem with the music. So now we got to deal with the middle ground, which is perception. Now, if some of those calls were unfounded, you know, and suppose somebody did make a lot of the phone calls that were unfounded, my only question is, if I'm looking at this, this right here, these flyers like this, first of all, who printed them? And then, to me, this says nightclub, in my perception. This says nightclub. And also, I personally, because I wanted to get a better view, walked the neighborhood, because I know walk the neighborhoods, anyway. Just wanted to get a feel for, you know, what was going on and stuff like that. And, um, if you have drink specials, if you have DJs coming from where you, this is just my perception. Nobody has to agree with it. But I always wanted, I don't like being, you know, like, like they say, if it walks like a duck, talks like a duck, then guess what it is? Now, if you have drink specials, if you give out flyers, if you have to put soundproof like we just said, to me, that says nightclub. That's just me. I mean, I, I may be wrong, but that's what it says to me right now. Now, before we get an official, you know, before we get an official declaration of what is it? Because we're trying, we're being asked to rule on a very narrow restriction. But those two hours or that hour or so, that makes a big difference between a bar, a nightclub, and then people have a right, residents have a right, to not have a public nuisance in their neighborhood. And that's just, well, that's what, before we got to that.
Mr. Patterson, can you, I know you have, eh, done this before, but before we continue to proceed, if you could just, eh, for the benefit of those who have not heard, what is the C.D.O. specifically for the Gallo Cafe and that establishment?
Uh, I think Mr. Bradshaw has referenced, uh, previously, um, it's a legal non-confilling use, um, for a restaurant, uh, to, to be there. It's been used as a pizza mill, I think it was something, uh, before that, uh, for many decades as that. The types of activities, I can't, I have no idea how it was used forty years ago, but it, it does seem to have, uh, become, um, potentially more entertainment oriented. Whether it's a nightclub or a restaurant, it, it's a somewhat subjective, uh, determination. As, um, we, Mr. Barker read earlier, uh, what the, uh, the definitions are for nightclub, it's whether you're primarily going there for the entertainment value. One of the criteria that we look at to determine that is whether a cover charge, uh, is being, um, placed on someone going into the, uh, the establishment. Well, in theory, that if you're just going out to a restaurant, you normally don't pay a cover charge to take it into place. Um, I believe there were some flyers here that have been, I haven't seen those, so I'm not sure whether they're saying, you know, it's twenty dollars to get in the door or, or something like that. But if it's that, that would be an indication that they're operating more as a, as a nightclub. A restaurant or is that a bar can have music as sort of a background type atmosphere. Uh, you might be, you know, the owner might put soundproofing in to be extra sure that it's, uh, not disturbing the neighbors. But if they're playing it very loud, you can hear the thumping bass across the street and so forth, that's usually not what one would consider a dining atmosphere. So you have to take all these different factors into, uh, account to determine what it is. So it's a subjective, uh, type of thing that may take a number of, uh, visits to the facility or beginning of reports from the, uh, police officer who's out there as to what that activity is going on to, uh, determine it exactly. But there does seem to be, uh, at least some indication that it's being used, that it's more than just a, a sit-down restaurant with, uh, a little bit of background music or a jukebox. I hope that clarified. Thanks.
Thank you. Sherry?
Yes, um, Madam Council President, members of the council. Just as long as everyone understands, let me go through this again. Mr. Bradshaw was correct, and, and I believe you all understand that the purpose of this hearing is to revisit the relaxation of the two special conditions regarding, um, turning off the music at, uh, 1:00 a.m. on, on, um, Saturday evenings and 11:00 p.m. on Sunday evenings, which this council, when they renewed the license, uh, back last year in June, had decided they would, they would hold those particular, um, special conditions in advance, okay? What happens with the renewal of labor license is this council at this time, if you want to put additional restrictions on this license, you can't. You can't do that until the time of renewal, okay? So just so everybody's clear on that. This, the bigger hearing also has nothing to do with zone violations or whether it's a permitted use or isn't a permitted use. Uh, those things are best dealt with with the zoning officer. And at the time of renewal, which comes up, uh, quite frankly, in just a few months, um, the council could look at all of those issues and decide, uh, at the time of renewal, if they want to impose additional special conditions. Maybe that address additional issues that have been brought up here tonight. But the only issue for consideration by the council here this evening is that very narrow issue that I just described. If the council so desires to, um, remove, okay, the provision of the ordinance that was passed, uh, last year that said, uh, no, they can keep the music on until closing on, uh, on Saturday and Sunday evenings, then so be it. If not, the council also has the, uh, the pleasure of continuing, um, to hold those special conditions in advance or suspending them, if you will, until this license comes up for renewal again. So that is the very narrow issue that's for consideration before the council.
Any, any council members who just move?
So right now, just to make clear, right now, the, the Gala has, um, live music, a recorded music is shut off at 1:00 a.m. on Fridays and Saturdays?
No, 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 no. They have, they, just let me explain again, okay?
Can you spread this out?
I don't know.
Right. You want to impose, if you decide to impose the special condition, then you will go back and have them turn off the music, live record it, um, at 1:00 a.m. on Saturday evening and 11:00 p.m. on Sunday. The way it is now is they're allowed to have that music until closing on those nights.
Seven and Sunday.
Right.
Right.
Correct. Friday, no, we didn't, we didn't suspend that Friday. We still have to shut off at 1:00 a.m.
At 1:00 a.m. that I guess. But it's, so it's Saturday and Sunday, the only ones that we are, um?
Considering.
Considering.
Correct.
And on Sunday at this time, it's up to one?
Till closing, closing, till 2:00 a.m.
Uh, I, in my, you know, my opinion is on Sunday or to closing is kind of late, especially when people have to work. So I would, I would really consider going, like, we had at 11:00.
Yeah, you can only go back to 11:00. You can't decide 12:00. It either has to be?
No, 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 11:00 on Sundays. Just because Sunday is the day that, you know, the next day before you to go in. Whether they here or not, eh?
Well, I, I think that was the council's mindset when they initially came up with the special conditions.
So that would be my?
What's supposed to pass?
2:00 a.m.
So, so it's really only an hour earlier on Saturday?
Correct.
At 11 o'clock. So what do we, uh, council, what do we have to do? Is this a form of a motion to?
Yes, it indicates to me how the, uh, the council would like to proceed. And I'll mark up a resolution, and we adopt it either now or in the center of general.
I definitely would like to go back to the one at 11:00 o'clock, see how that works.
So you are to make it as simple as?
Let's make it a motion.
Yes, second.
Yeah, we have a motion.
We have a motion. Did you read the, uh?
Yes.
Okay.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
Council President Escobar?
Aye.
And, uh, the resolution, uh, we would elect to, uh, to indicate the vote. And for members of the public and to the council, um, the special condition has now been reinfected and the suspension now has ceased. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's continue with the meeting. We have three ordinances on first meeting. Order 031, 001 is an ordinance to amend and supplement the vice general ordinances of the city of the Bronx to a higher degree, bearing to some priorities. If you could just give us a little explanation of this, I know this has?
We're, we're making some, uh, changes to the parks, uh, permit, uh, fee structure. In most cases, the, uh, the fees established in 2011, uh, are remaining intact. But in some cases, we're creating a new, um, permit. For, for example, there's a racing, um, uh, marathon coming up soon. The group expects 5,000 runners. That's going to cause, um, all of the interior roadway of Buck Blue Park to be closed down. Uh, we thought we needed to, uh, at least recoup our costs for, um, accommodating the event. So we're, we're adding a, a special, uh, event permit to the ordinance. Uh, in some cases, we're establishing two-hour minimums for people who want to use a, a ball field or something like that. The, the significance of the two-hour minimum is by union contract, if we bring someone in to, uh, work the event, they have to get paid for two hours. So we, we're just trying to clean up some language and, um, freshen up some of the, uh, permit fees from previous years.
And these fees will be for everybody, and we have the assumption for only these corporations or churches or resident?
We, at the moment, there's no, there's no, uh, distinction between resident or non-resident. Um, but we are often approving prayer revivals, for instance, to, uh, for example, in Peaster Park, we're often approving them without a fee. Uh, that's something we probably need to, I think, look at in the future. But at the moment, uh, it is not changing the current arrangement.
Thank you. Anybody?
Is there any other people that have expressed a desire that they can't do what they want to do now that these fees are higher or?
No, I have not heard that.
This is our first reading of that council's person.
Yes, no one knows what they call it. I don't, I just thought myself.
That's okay.
Okay, so, can we have?
I move the ordinance setting down, uh, April 3rd, same day we advertise.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
Council President Escobar?
Yes. Order 031 to be released and ordered to approve a long-term tax exemption of financial agreement between the city of the Bronx and Matrix Upper Lot and Garage.
Make a motion.
I'll just explain it a little bit, just in case anybody has any?
Both of these ordinance deal with, um, the development of the, of the Matrix Upper Lot and Garage. And Mr. Patterson is here, I think he can give just a thumbnail sketch, if you would, Mr. Patterson, what these ordinance is dealing with. It's a pot of code for tax.
Um, the project man, Matrix is proposing is to develop 393 residential units on what is referred to as the Upper Lot, which is the parking lot behind the two office buildings at the 303 and 317, George Duke. In addition to that, they would build a parking garage of 550 spaces. Uh, because the, um, residential units and the, um, parking garage are financed separately, uh, it's required to have, uh, two different, um, financial agreements to be able to, uh, accomplish that. They are hoping to get, uh, started on the project in the, in the relatively near future. Uh, the, uh, financial agreement provides for a pilot payment of, uh, looks 825,000 dollars to be, um, applied, uh, in lieu of the, uh, the taxes, which is about nine times higher than what's being paid on the, uh, parking lot there, uh, right now. Any other questions? Yeah, I'm trying to answer.
Thank you. May I have a motion?
I move the ordinance setting down April 3rd, uh, same day we advertise.
Second. Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
Council President Escobar?
Yes. Order 031 to be released and ordered to approve a long-term tax exemption of financial agreement between the city of the Bronx and Matrix New Street and Garage, 31111.
Motion setting down April 3rd, uh, same day we advertise.
Second. Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
Council President Escobar?
Yes. At this time, resolution, we're going to the resolutions. Resolution 031 to be released to resolution 031363. Was anybody?
We adopted 33, um, connection with the?
The Gala. Was anybody from the phone who has any comments on each of these resolutions? Yes, Mrs. Stewart?
Richard Stewart, 90 Elson Street. Resolution on page five, resolution number 21. I'm not sure, you're talking about a lot for building, uh, 81 and Remsen Avenue?
Same agreement, yes.
Yes. 81 Remsen is the, uh, old firehouse that has been, uh, partially, um, unoccupied with a, um, a museum, fire museum up on the second floor.
Okay, I wasn't sure when that was the one. Okay, I wasn't sure what that was the one. What are they going to use it for now?
It's going to be totally refurbished, in addition, added to the building with an elevator. The fire museum will remain intact but improved, and at the ground level, it'll be a community center to be occupied by the tenant, which is Catholic Charities of the Diocese of Attucky.
I don't think it's where our fire should, Catholic Charities, yes. Any other questions, please, Stewart?
Yes, I'm just curious, and I think I may have a half an idea. On page two, number six, item number six, the emergency temporary appropriations, could I get a clarification actually as to what is happening there? When I looked at the pages...
Yes, it is keeping the temporary budget for 2013 properly appropriated, so people can do their jobs and enter into contracts and things like that. The 2013 budget has not been introduced yet, but what this resolution does is it continues to appropriate money on a temporary basis until the permanent budget is put in place.
But it's sort of, I take it around it, it's in line with the projected budget?
Typically, we start the year by appropriating 25% of last year's budget per department, but when something requires some additional funding, like the execution of a contract, for instance, if we do health benefits and we renew with a healthcare provider that exceeds the 25%, we will, by temporary resolution, amend the amount of money in the temporary budget at that time.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public wishes to address the council on resolution 33 to resolution 363?
Who did the resolution?
Second.
Yeah, I'm staying, I'm staying from 62.
362. And I'm going to stay from resolution 31363.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Council Vice President Egan?
Yes.
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Geralati?
Aye.
Council Vice President Escobar?
Yes, President.
I'm sorry.
At this time, I'll let you tell your comments from the public. It's the front of the middle corner, and I can't call. I'll be there.
Charles Crowderville, Fifth Ward, New Brunswick. I wanted to ask the council if they were aware of what happened at the planning board meeting last week?
Tell us, Mr. Crowder.
I'd be happy to. I was in attendance.
Go ahead.
I was in attendance at that meeting, I know that there was no one from the council there, so, in case you hadn't heard yet, the proposal for the Somerset Muse Building, Mr. Boray's building on Somerset Street, was, you know, brought back before the planning board for a second time. The project was changed, and it was changed so that it could be bigger, so that the required setback at 95 feet in the air, where the building would move a little further back at least, that was eliminated, so now it goes all the way out, the whole way, and... Please.
I've been done, so that won't be...
I'm certainly not, I guess I can...
And you finished your...
Well, so they were granted an additional variance, the building is now bigger, and as a result, there will be more two-bedroom units than there were before. And if you recall, when we discussed the abatement for that property, and I discussed the potential impact on the school district, which will be missing out on funds that they're getting now, and missing out on even more revenue that they would get if the building were to be built without the abatement, I, and I raised the question that conceivably, in 10 years, there might be some school-aged children living in that building, and they may want to attend New Brunswick Public Schools, and although the building will not contribute at all to the tax revenues of the school district, that those students will, of course, rightfully be permitted to attend the schools here, but that that would create a financial detriment to the district, that, you know, the schools will have more kids but no more money to teach the kids, to provide the education to the kids. And so now, it's something on the order of a 20% increase in the number of two-bedroom units, which, if you recall, when we sort of hashed all this out, Mr. Patterson said that, well, really, this building won't have that many school-aged children because there's not that many two-bedroom units. Well, after you approved the abatement, he went back to the planning board and he got more two-bedroom units, which will mean more school-aged children in this now abated building, and the building will actually have a larger footprint. There would be more properties that are a part of it. At least two individual lots were added to it, or at least part of one and a full other lot, and so now those, I just want to know, what is the impact on the taxes now? Because there's even more land that's going to be abated. Presumably, we're not renegotiating the price, or are we, for that abatement? And what's the impact on the schools? I know you voted against it, Council President, I thank you for that, but what is happening here?
Mr. Patterson?
Well, Mr. Crowderville was incorrect in stating that the building goes straight up to start with. There's still a setback at about the 50-foot level to set the building back, so it's not going straight up there. The developers, specifically the Boray Development Group, came back in to amend their application. What they're doing is adding affordable housing to this project. 20% of the units will be affordable. In order to do that, one of the things that the Housing and mortgage finance agency, the state agency, wanted to do was add some additional two-bedroom units in there. I don't know that that will attract, certainly not going to attract any large families there because they're two-bedroom units. It is still a project that is particularly attractive to persons who probably do not have children there. It is going to provide a substantial number of affordable housing units in the downtown area, next to the train station, next to the major employers of town, and every time we're trying to put these mixed-use or, and mixed-income projects in downtown, such as Gateway, the George, Mr. Crowderville finds some objections providing some affordable housing downtown. But this is something that is important for us to have in our downtown area, provides a mix of incomes, provides a mix of uses, and that's what this project does.
Exactly. The two bedrooms that you're speaking of, are they affordable housing, two bedrooms?
Yes.
Okay.
They're just added.
Thanks.
Yes.
So, is it, so, the one argument, you're saying, is there a problem with the school system, I mean, the school system isn't getting enough money from the taxes?
I'm saying that it would be a net negative for the district if there are more kids and no more funds to support the kids.
So, you're saying that people who are not contributing to the tax base shouldn't, are a burden on the school district?
I'm saying that there's a financial net negative.
I mean, is that, that's what you said?
If the district has more kids in the district and aren't getting more funds, yes.
Okay, so, those that are not bringing anything to the tax base are a burden on the school district. That's what you're saying, people in that building is going to be...
I'm not saying that the people there are at fault, but I'm saying that...
No, I'm just asking, I mean, is there, the revenues that are, okay, not the people.
I'm saying you.
Can I, can I finish?
Of course, finish, thank you.
The revenues, but we won't say people, the revenues that we are not generating out of that building, that is not bringing tax money into the school system, are a burden on the school system.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes, absolutely, if there are, there are no revenues coming...
I agree with you, no, I agree with you, but, I mean, maybe not in that building.
Sure, and I just, well, you know, I hope those kids want to go to New Brunswick schools, I hope the parents want to send them there, and when it's a 30-year abatement we're talking about, hopefully the schools will be in a position where the kids living in that building in 10 years will want to go to the district, and just for the record, I'm not against having affordable housing in New Brunswick, I totally support that. I think we need more affordable housing, but there was a bait and switch that went on here. Let's be very real about it. Mr. Boray came to you for the tax abatement, and then the plan was changed to make the abatement more favorable to him after he had gotten it.
Because he had affordable housing.
But see, when he was here, and when you approved the abatement, that was already on the table, that was already clear. Mr. Patterson said, the reason that we're doing this is that we want to have affordable housing in here, and by granting the abatement, that will make that possible, and then after the fact, he went back and changed the plan, and it made it worse for the school system. After, I'm saying, there's got to be a process, it's got to go in order.
Well, we said, yes.
So what would make you more happier, that we went back and got more money out of him, that would satisfy you then?
You bet, and I think some of that might have gone to the school.
Well, it's not going to go to the schools, you know that already.
Well, I'm saying, something's messed up about that, if we're going to be adding kids to the district with no...
Well, I believe Mr. Patterson gave an explanation that it wasn't the Boray's fault, it's an obligation by whatever you cite in the statute, or whatever, that when you have a certain percentage of the building, you have to have so much affordable housing. I don't think it was a bait and switch. I don't agree with you at all.
He didn't need to get the tax abatement, though, is my thing.
Well, that's your opinion.
Right, and he was going to build the building whether he got the abatement or not. Do you disagree with that?
Mr. Crowderville.
I don't know, you have to ask him that.
Whatever, you know, this council did, the decision was made, and I think it's great that they have, you know, at least they have, well, now, affordable housing. I still don't...
Certainly a plus.
You know, it's a plus, so I'm glad that that happened, so, it is what it is at this time, you know, it's, you just have to...
So, one of the criteria that HMFA looks at, and we addressed this the last time we discussed this issue, one of the criteria that HMFA looks at is whether the project has a tax abatement. That's one of the things that they look at, whether they decide that they're going to finance the project. It helps protect, the financing that they're doing helps protect the bondholders that they sell their bonds to. So it's not just something that they would have provided the affordable housing without it. Before they had the HMFA financing, they were not providing affordable housing. When they tried to get the HMFA financing, that comes with a tax base if we get affordable housing.
I have one more question. Do we get money, is it a per-unit basis that we get the money for the pilot payment? Is it based per unit for that project?
It's based on the revenue that is generated. If there's more units, or there are larger units which have a higher rent, that brings in more revenue, that would increase the pilot amount.
So technically, if there's more units, we're going to get more revenue?
Yes.
Okay, so I don't understand.
I forget the exact figure, but it's around $800,000 that we're getting for this, which is, again, about eight times what the properties there are paying currently.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
I still have many more questions.
Well, I'm sorry. Mr. Crowderville, this is a very old building, and you're a young man, could you come stand up and not lean on it?
Yes, I'm starting, I apologize.
But she's sitting down. I'm old.
I'll read.
My Mr. Crowder.
So, just as a matter of public record, for the record, Mr. Patterson just said the payment will be in a neighborhood of $800,000. At the last meeting where this was addressed, the figure given was $552,000, and so I think that this abatement was approved, and the details are not clear.
Excuse me, Mr. Crowder, I just got to interrupt you. Mr. Crowder was talking about the Matrix project with the $800,000. You got to pay attention to that.
I said it was off the top of my head, I don't recall what the number was, I recall it's about eight, eight times more.
I'm not, I'm not speaking about the Matrix project, is anybody speaking about the Matrix?
No, I was, I was referring to the Boray building. But as I said, I was trying to recall it off the top of my head, so if there's, I will be incorrect in that, I will revise my statements.
Thank you, I'm just...
Let's move on, Mr. Crowder.
There was no confusion as to...
I just think we should know what the deal we're signing up for is, if the taxpayers are on the move. And I thank you for your no vote, but I just want to find out more about this, and forgive me for wanting to know where our money's going. The other question I wanted to ask is, where would someone go to, like, ask the mayor a question in public? Does the mayor have any public appearances scheduled at all where you can ask him a question?
Is that my shadow?
Not at this time. No, so I know that the mayor traditionally does a state of the city address, I think he neglected to do that last year, decided not to do that last year, and there's usually not questions after that, but nevertheless, it's a chance to see the mayor and hear what he has to say. That wasn't done last year, that's not scheduled for this year, and the mayor traditionally does it brown bag lunch at the library where he does take questions, and I don't know the last time that happened, but I know you're all doing your duty here, and you have to come here, and you have to hear the public, and you have to answer questions from the public. Where's the mayor? When can, when can people actually speak to the mayor, ask a question of the mayor?
As far as I know, the mayor, the office is right here, 9 to 5, he's always there, even data, and says that he has the, if he's there, if he's...
Right, he's a part-time mayor, so, like, I might make a trip down here and I won't find him here.
Well, they have, I'm... He has some staff here, that you can give a message for.
You can always go to the office and make a...
Yeah, right.
Okay. I'll pursue that, I just think that, you know, most elected officials do like to make themselves available to the public. At least once a year, it'd be nice for the mayor to come out to the library and answer questions from citizens, and, you know, if he ever hears this, I hope he'll do...
What do you expect us to do? I can't make the mayor come here as much as I can make you not come here. There you go.
I'm just, I'm just out of the lot, you know?
Thank you, Mr. Crowder. Anything else?
Yeah, a couple more. I just wanted to know, there was a shooting earlier this week, right on this block, right on this street. Could I get some information about what happened?
Captain Miller?
It was a press release, but I don't know if you saw it, there was a shooting. It was, we just had a race, remember, it was a drug-related, the victim was targeted. Another individual was shot, who was standing alongside the victim, the person involved in the drug transaction, and so it run, the suspects fled the area, they haven't been apprehended yet, and that's part of our investigation.
Is the identity of the suspects known, or is that not public information?
That's not...
Okay. Two more questions, forgive me for taking so long. An ambulance was dispatched to what's called the Sally Court of the police station on the, I think, the 23rd of February, 2:58 a.m. I've asked several times via email about this. I want to know why was there an ambulance sent to the Sally Court that night?
What date was it?
I believe February 23rd at 2:58 a.m. I've sent you emails about this.
An individual punched the camera, there was a person under arrest, he punched the camera, the monitors, the prisoner holding area, he received a cut on his hand, the officers who were with him, all today, ambulance to treat your comments.
Thank you kindly, and the last thing, and I know the last meeting was very emotional, there was a lot going on, I neglected to ask about a resolution that was passed for the police department to purchase ammunition, I think it was something on the order of $15,000 worth of ammunition. Can I ask what the purpose of that purchase was?
They've all got guns.
Yeah, I'm aware, I'm just saying, like, did we fire off $15,000 worth of bullets in the last year? No.
No, you have a point, because I was at the same position.
Okay, yeah, so I just want to know, that's all.
We're required by law, the training, with some weapons twice a year, some weapons four times a year, based at requirement of how many rounds have to be fired, these qualifications. It adds up very quickly, the majority of that ammunition is for training.
Okay, and so that 15,000, that 15K purchase, that's for a year, for a year, for one year?
Yes, I have a question, yeah.
Thank you, that's all.
Mr. Blackwell, anybody else?
Yes, Mike White, 286 East and Avenue Recreation Director. I just wanted to bring some positive news, that last week, we had two wonderfully, wonderfully successful events in the city of New Brunswick. On Friday, we had the World Cup trophy here in a huge celebration at the high school, where probably about 3,000 people had a chance to participate in clinics and get a picture with the World Cup trophy. That's pretty amazing for us to have that opportunity here in the city of New Brunswick, courtesy of Johnson &amp; Johnson. And then on Friday night, we had 15 Rutgers graduates that currently play in the NFL come and play a celebrity basketball game here, and we gave another 2,000 tickets out to the kids in the city who both have made the honor roll. Made it a wonderful event that evening, they actually got a chance to play some of these guys from the city. Fire Department played the Special Olympics, which broke my heart, it was just wonderful. They played the second quarter, the recreational stars and teachers played the third, fourth quarter, and every kid got an autograph from the players, and it was just wonderful. We just said it's going to be a great race to come back, he was the only one that didn't come back, but we did have 15 players who played in the NFL, had graduated from Rutgers, one from Wisconsin, one of our own, homegrown talent. Jonathan Casillas, who just signed up at the Buccaneers, he came and played for the city teams, but it was wonderfully successful for the city, and just wanted to share that with you. Thank you.
Anybody else from the public wishes to address the council?
Hi, my name is Danielle Moore, I live at 212 Joyce Cumberland. You know, I've come to speak to the city about safety for our children. That's, well, we can have, I'd love to, remove the fence from Joyce Cumberland Park, we'd like to know, will you be putting up a new one?
The fence at Joyce Cumberland Park? The fence at Joystone Park?
Yeah, yes, that comes along, cuts the park off an avenue. Will you be replacing that?
I'm quite certain that we will, there's some additional improvements that are, that'll be made to the park this summer, for instance, the bathroom structure will be rebuilt.
I'm not talking about the bathroom, I'm just only talking about...
I know, I was giving you...
No, he's just trying to give you a little bit of things that are going to happen at the park, that that might be a reason why that fence is not there, so that's why he was trying to explain to you.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So this is the first, and then we...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. This is Blackwell.
I'll double-check the, the plan on whether the fence is going to be restored. My, my guess is that it, it will be.
Okay, because you do know that's one part that's on a main busy avenue, and like I said, for instance, where a child, we have to kick a ball where it's no gate there that what, that can come to the street, that can cause a major accident, a child can run after the ball and get hit, so I hope the city will put a fence up there soon, just to where, you know, next week is spring break, and there will be plenty of children out there, so hopefully we're talking about soon, not that in, not in June, for the safety of our children.
Absolutely, thank you.
And then, and then one more thing that I do have, that's where I, a lot of people are proud to see that the city has started the swimming for our children, but my question is, does the city have a plan with the Board of Education on how the grades are going to be going, how often the kids are going to be getting the swimming lessons that they were told?
I know they're part of the gym classes, I don't know how often they go, but it is part of the gym, you know, the health classes, and they started going. There's also some programs that the Wellness Center has for those kids that are not part of those classes, that are, they're going to have some programs on weekends, they're going to be starting soon, that they're going to offer swimming lessons to the rest of the kids from the community, that they could go and get swimming lessons, those who are not part of the Board of Education.
Oh, okay. Okay, I'm just making sure that it wasn't a one-time swimming.
No, 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 that's part of the...
It's like bottom of fourth grade, going, going up.
It's the beginning, so I'm really happy about that, and they're starting here at Idris, plus they're offering for others too, it's also part of the Wellness Center with the Community Health Promotion Program, that they're going to start offering the swimming lessons for those kids who aren't part of the classes, you know.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yes, Mr. Pigman.
Thank you.
Name my address, please.
Tomell Pittman, 291 St. Street. The situation that happened on Barre Street, 46 Barre?
It's on Barre Street, I don't really see others.
Oh, because, I mean, because I'm a little bit aware of the situation.
So why is your question, Mr. Pigman?
The reason I say that is because that shooting took place in the building of my offices, in my floor, and I'm very concerned, I'm quite sure you don't want anything happening to me.
I wish if you were, I'm not saying you were...
You wish I were there?
No, I'm not saying that, I said, as I said earlier, with the drug dealing going on, I wish the public would make us aware so we didn't act in drug dealing itself.
Prior to leading to that shooting, if there was...
Nobody, and when I'm there, nobody's on the floor. So I don't know, I hope you guys rectify the situation for my sake, I was trying to be known as a client.
And hopefully next time, if you're there, you say something, please call the police and let them know so they could, you know, be on the lookout for situations like that. If there was drug dealing going on, and if you notice, if we know about it, the police knows, they could have maybe only a private...
But they do have cameras in, in the building.
Okay.
Okay. This, this, awesome. So, Councilman Egan?
Yes, sir.
You wasted an excellent joke on Charlie for me. Come on, man. Oh, man.
That's a guy who was sitting before you, no.
In a more serious note, I got a call Wednesday about a situation at Lord Sterling School. There's a recreational situation there, and I went to the Board of Education meeting yesterday, and I thought it was an issue that they should be dealing with. They ultimately sent me here, the issue. What happened, I got a phone call at 5:30. I met the Lord Sterling at 6 o'clock, I noticed there were, there was a person running a rec center, and she was taping a sign on the window stating that the kids weren't allowed in. I'm observing about 50 kids coming to this, to, to play basketball at that present time. It was heartbreaking, and the gym wasn't being occupied. Somewhere along the line, these kids weren't informed that they're not supposed to be at that gym, and the person running it said that they had access to the gym. I'm trying to figure out, somewhere along the line, who dropped the ball, because we sent 50 kids back to, getting 50 teens and little kids to do something's hard. And we had, that's more kids that come to the teen center, and we had them there, basketball shorts, about six basketballs, they were ready to go in, so I made phone calls and I contacted some, someone from the city, and he did his system. I'll get Glenn Fleming, I contacted him. He got on the phone, you know, he, he did whatever he could at that minute, you know, and I, if you did the opposite, I would say something, so, you know, just, we got on the phone, we got on the job, and I appreciate that. But I was trying to figure out so that it don't ever happen again, because it was heartbreaking to me. You know, I had no answer for those kids, and I wonder, like, what transpired, if you guys could look into that, you know, if it is a city issue, which I don't think it was, because I don't think it initially started it, city, but they told me it was you guys, a situation that you guys are dealing with.
Okay, I think it's a miscommunication, Mr. Blackwell is here...
Yeah, I can answer that.
Thank you.
The Recreation Youth Basketball Program started in December and ended on the 18th of March. This was an at-large group of kids that wanted to continue, there's about a dozen, between 12 and 15 kids, I was incorrect on the 50 number. I was there tonight, we opened, we continued the program, we extended it six more weeks on Mondays and Wednesdays. Our, the 18th was our last night of hot shots basketball, the 19th is the night he's talking about. That night, we were told at Paul Robinson that we couldn't use the gym because the principal wanted to use it that night, so we moved our adult basketball league down there that evening on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Apparently, there was a group of people that wanted to continue using the gymnasium for open basketball, so we took that into consideration, we've now extended the program six more weeks because of the cold winter, but we're still offering, even though today's birthday, spring. So on Mondays and Wednesdays, we have open gym up there tonight before the meeting. It's about 11 kids playing basketball in the gym, so it is significant, it's been on a flat that we have a lot of volunteers who want to continue the program. We kept our coordinator on for another six weeks, and we are currently finishing up the men's adult basketball league there on Tuesdays and Thursdays, so we're pretty much in a gym for, for nights out of the week, playing basketball programs for the community.
Thank you.
Yeah, it is, I think in the text that it's now open Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, and I guess he's confirming that it's, you know, that it will be an ongoing situation, and it's, it's cool with me.
Thank you. Mr. Pigman?
Can we just get some, maybe some signage up?
Yeah.
So that people know exactly where it runs from, and so that they don't come up yet.
Yeah, it was, we basically just started, because we have a group of kids that still want to play, and it's cold out still, so...
Well, that day, that day was about 50. I don't know if that was an abnormal day, or I don't know, but it was a lot of kids.
It wasn't abnormal anymore, there was one day of 50, and one day of 30 around here, but we decided to continue another six weeks and see how it goes from there.
Thank you, very good. Anybody else from the public wishes to address the council? Yes, please, Mr. Stewart.
I'd like to say, I'm glad that Mr. Patterson spared some story about who's going to be in the second bedroom. I have an idea who that is, but I can call back.
Mr. Stewart.
The second bedroom deal.
Mr. Stewart, what is your question?
I don't have, well, yes, I do, I'm, I'm getting to it.
Okay.
I was saying, this is, this question of who is going to be in the second bedroom when they have these two-bedroom apartments. I had a slightly, an opposite deal back when, some years ago, when Ed Pass was being approved. They had two-bedroom apartments, but they had no playground out there. And I, that's what I told them, who's going to be there, and so they agreed that there were going to be children. I'm wondering whether these, in this second, in this particular case, I'm wondering whether they are going to, they figure the mother-in-law's, or the mother is going to be there, that there aren't going to be any children in these second bedrooms? One, I'm just curious, because I am inclined to agree that there is a problem, if you're going to have children and they, and people in the building are not paying, people with children are not paying toward the school system. I think that they should be. I'm a bachelor, but I have always felt that it was, somewhere in my retinal, I was supposed to contribute, because it's important that we have.
You're a bachelor.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart.
Coming back, otherwise, what I wanted to say is, I brought up some items before, one that I didn't bring up, but I want to come back to it again, the clinic down here.
The drain?
The drain.
Oh, the drain? I thought I was saying...
No, when the water, when the water comes down on the roof, and the water is going across the sidewalk, because the drain is locked up. As far as I know, has the city done anything to talk to the clinic people about that?
Mr. Pigman?
I inspected the, the drain days after the most recent complaint. It was clean, I took photographs of it, I have them for his inspection. I don't know what, I don't believe it is a, in the condition you said it was two or three months ago.
I'm telling you that every day that it rains, and it rained this last week, and the water was flowing right across the sidewalk, because it can't go through the drain. Don't inspect it in the middle of summer, when there's no rain for weeks.
Far from the middle of summer. Okay, I was, I was pretty clear, the, the condition had been cleaned up after his most recent...
It has not been, because just this past week, right here, when we had rain the other day, I'm walking down there, and the water's coming right across the sidewalk. Something else that I wanted to know, is anything going to be done about the, the handicap, the curb cuts? Now, there's a, I mentioned it before, that both at the corner of my, at the corner by my building, there are not curb cuts over on the one side of Wall Street.
Mr. Stewart, on the side of the new building?
Pardon?
On the side of the new building, or...
No, 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 this is not, no buildings, this is, this is buildings that have been there, there's no new buildings around that corner.
No, 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 the corner of the new building that they built, I'm just trying to find out, locate where is that, that, the curve that you're talking about?
I'm talking about Nielsen and Moore's.
Oh, no, it's okay, so it's the other side.
Yeah, one side, one part, one part of it is curb cut, the other side is not curb cut.
Okay.
Also, at the Wolfson Deck. The deck, the entrance is going into the deck, there are no curb cuts on Nielsen.
Okay. So we, it's coming down here, probably when they, that's part of where it's on, it's coming down soon, that deck.
The Wolfson Deck?
The foot is on the surface, it's going to be fixed, so it probably will get fixed, probably gonna find new, finding that.
Oh, you can explain to me, I have no idea why that would be taken down. And the other thing that is a new item, as far as I'm concerned, on Moore Street, cemetery's on one side, behind the library. There's, on the one side is the cemetery, and that is the side where the sidewalks are in horrible condition by the cemetery. Now, I don't know who technically, I know, I, last I heard, the one church, the one cemetery is affiliated, that's First Presbyterian, I believe, has that cemetery, but the other two are deceased churches.
Okay. Where the sidewalks are in bad condition.
It's, it's right opposite, you know, where now the new, where it used to be the synagogue, but is now the Catholic Church?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, right opposite along there.
Okay.
The, the sidewalks are all popped, so that, you know, tripping, falling, it's, and, and what bothers me is that I keep, and I've said it before, who is responsible on the city payroll to look at these things and see these things and initiate action?
We have housing inspectors, and we have some inspectors, and the engineer's office will look at the condition you're complaining about. The, the three cemeteries in question, there's no active group that accepts any maintenance responsibility over the cemeteries, the city steps in in the absence of any of those cemeteries still being viable, so we'll take a look at the sidewalk condition he's concerned about.
Thank you. And Mr. Stewart?
Coming back to the question of who is responsible, he's saying you have an inspection department.
Yes, we do.
My problem is, my question, did they ever come out of the office between coffee breaks?
Yes, I think they do.
Well, then why don't they see this?
I don't know, Mr. Stewart, maybe they have, maybe they've been sending summonses to the wrong property owner, I'm not sure.
Well, if they're sending them to the deceased people in the cemetery, I can tell you, the mail doesn't get there.
And Mr. Stewart, so we're going to look at, at, hang on to that. I just, before, before we finish, yes, sir?
Yeah. Before we finish, I just wanted, just was brought to my attention that Emmanuel Johnson in 2009 in Rosick High School, guy, who's actually currently a senior in North Carolina A.C. and T State University, has been awarded a full-credit scholarship to the study of England, so.
Right.
I'd also like to thank, I got an invitation at the beginning of the month to speak to Lincoln School in the third graders, and Dr. Sues, and to read to the class and talk to the class, and if this is any indication of what our young people are learning and doing, respectful of what they did, it was a great accomplishment to his teacher, to the principal, and everybody at Lincoln School, so I was very, very happy to see that.
Yeah, we all went there, it was very good.
What do you do in German?
Your phone? Councilmember Anderson.
Wait, one more thing.
Councilmember...
Yes.
Councilmember Seven.
Yes.
Councilmember Berlai. Yes. Council President Escobar. Yes.